Is there a motion to go in closed session?
Sub move.
Second.
Third.
Be it resolved, Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enter into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2.2-3711, discussion, consideration, or interview for prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disner or resignation of specific officers, appointee, or employees of any public body. One, Agency on Aging, Montgomery Floyd Regional Library. Three, Parks and Rec Commission. Four, Personnel. Ma'am Secretary, call roll please.
Mr. Tuck.
Aye.
Trisakowski.
Aye.
Mr. Mott.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Ms. Bowe.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Chair Keane.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to come out of closed session?
Sub move to your second.
Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has conveyed a closed meeting on this date pursuant to a surmised recorded vote and in accordance with the provision of Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2-3711, the Code of Virginia requires a certi- certification by the Boards that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia laws. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements by Virginia laws were discussed in the closed meeting and to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveyed that closed meetings were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Ma'am Secretary, call roll please.
Mr. Mott.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Ms. Bowe.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck.
Aye.
Trisakowski.
Aye.
Chair Keane.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. They will have invocation and pledge allegiance laid by county administrator.
Thank you. If you could rise for a moment of silence, I'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Let us pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator.
Mr. Chair and Board Members, our first item this evening is a recognition of our information technology department. We have Phil Martin, the IT Director here this evening. I'd like to read this if I could. The Center for Digital Government and the National Association of Counties recently announced the winners of the 17th Annual Digital Counties Survey. This is a survey that's conducted by the Center for Digital Government in partnership with NACO, and it identifies the best technology practices among U.S. counties, including initiatives that streamline delivery of government services, encourage open data, collaboration in shared services, enhance cybersecurity, and contribute to disaster response and recovery efforts. In the category of counties nationwide up to 150,000 population, Montgomery County placed second nationally. So that's quite an achievement, and we thought you would want to recognize Phil and the IT Department for that achievement. The awards down here at the front, if you'd like to come down. Phil, you come up? Board Members, the next item on our agenda this evening is a presentation from Kareem Khan, our library director, to discuss a mural as part of public art on the southwest wall of the Christiansburg Library. Kareem, welcome.
Good evening. How are you?
Great.
Thank you for, um, how do I pop up? Sorry. Thank you for being willing to have this on the agenda. So, that explains it. Thank you, Jim. The town of Christiansburg, as you may know, has a public art project involving murals on the outside of, well, outside in the town, and they came to us with an idea, and so we are coming to you with what their proposal is. They're proposing adding a mural as public art on the southwest wall of Christiansburg Library. That way, their rationales are, we'll add an appealing feature as part of the town's effort to beautify downtown, drive foot traffic, and be part of their creative placemaking initiative. It'll be one of a series of murals in town, and you've seen some of the public art that's from this initiative probably on the headquarters of the Christiansburg Police, as well as on the bridge in Cambria. The space where we're proposing on putting it is in front of the southwest wall at Christiansburg Library. It's a space that we currently use as an amphitheater for concerts on the lawn, and sometimes children's programming goes on out there as well. It's kind of a natural amphitheater where people sit on the grass on the hill and see the stage. And we can say that the art will not interfere with our current use of the library, but it might enhance it. So this is a current view, you can see, of the southwest wall, and can you all see these on here? As you can see, it's a brick wall. And this is the proposed view, and I should say that there is a revised proposal from my Board of Trustees, which was too late to get it to the packet, that has no text on it. That's just the design and the five historic buildings that you see. And mountains. So there is a revised proposal. Either proposal is something you all could consider. Just a few comments. Due to topography, the places that the mural can be seen from are really quite limited to the immediate area. It can't be seen from the roads except that small portion of Shelton Street that almost faces it. You can't see it from the field where the children are playing soccer or lacrosse right there, except a corner of it. You can see it from the old school, and you can see it from the houses in the immediate area. So if you look at the screen, it might be on your screen, I don't know how the system works. The parts that are in black and white, they can't see it. The hills are too big, so that's a very limited topography that you can see. The proposed top program and timeline, the mural will be funded by the town of Christiansburg and also by the Montgomery Floyd Regional Library Foundation. The artist is Katie Shepherd, she's a PhD candidate at Virginia Tech. And the support, the scaffolding and such is all going to be the town of Christiansburg. The intent right now is to complete it before the hard winter relief sets in this winter. And barring vandalism, it's a maintenance-free wall for 10 years at least. So we appreciate your consideration. The library does believe that the li- that the mural will be an asset to the library and the community, but we are, of course, interested in what you would like, what you could, what, what the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors thinks. Imagine the brick wall being replaced with the old one. And that is pretty much all the presentation I have, but I can take any questions, and I may turn to my colleagues, Casey Jenkins from the town of Christiansburg, and Selena Sullivan, the branch manager of Christiansburg Library, to answer some of those questions.
Just a couple of things first. Thank you very much for being here tonight. Could you clarify for the board, well, let me start by saying I'm our representative to the library Board of Trustees, and so I was able to attend the most recent meeting where this project was discussed. But if you wouldn't mind, just for this board, could you clarify the Montgomery Floyd Regional Library Foundation and how that's different from the Montgomery Floyd Regional Library?
Yes, the foundation is not-for-profit, it supports our mission and goals, and so they're a separate entity. They raise funds separately. They take donations, and they generally have two major fundraisers during the course of the year. Basically, they are a fundraising arm. As public employees, we aren't really, we don't do direct charitable appeals, but, but they do.
And the reason that I asked that was just to clarify that you're not here requesting anything from your library budget or from the Board of Supervisors' budget, because this is a project that would be funded by the foundation and the town of Christiansburg.
Right.
And I just wanted to share with my colleagues, as we're thinking about this presentation, some thoughts that the library board had. We had a little bit of discussion about the aesthetic and, and the buildings that are pictured here, and as Kareem said, we were overall, or they were overall supportive of the concept, but not necessarily the text on the mural. And so that was, that seemed to kind of rise to the top as an issue of importance for the library board. And so, could you clarify, you've gone back to the town of Christiansburg and talked about the text at this point?
Yes, and as far as we know, although it has not gone back to, it was approved by the town council, it was signed, and it hasn't gone back to the town council. But the administration of Christiansburg believes that everyone will be fine with the no-text version.
The library board felt like that took away significantly from the mural having that swath of text across it.
Go back to the biggest picture.
Yeah.
The biggest view of it I can find.
Because you've got the little, in the right bottom corner, you've got a small Montgomery Floyd Regional Library logo, and then Town of Christiansburg in Montgomery County, Virginia on the left, which is pretty big. And if you think of the size of that wall, how big that text would actually be. But I just wanted to make sure everybody on this board was aware of those couple of issues as we consider this idea from the libraries.
Is this thing going to be painted directly onto the brick, or is it on something else mounted on the brick?
Directly on.
Directly on. That's all I had. Careless.
I'll go ahead and show my ignorance. I think I recognize some of the buildings, but I want to just clarify the buildings that were named there. I guess, is that Schaefer Baptist Christiansburg Institute? I recognize the depot on the far right, but the, is that the Montgomery County Museum in the middle?
It is, left to right, the Schaefer Baptist Church, the Hill School, Edward Long Building. So those two are both associated with Christiansburg Institute. The original courthouse, the 1909 courthouse, which I guess wasn't original, but the 1909 historical courthouse, which does not stand at the time.
Right.
And, right, Cambria Depot.
Thank you.
I personally think it's a great idea. You know, you see these murals throughout the country, this is kind of, and it's just a brick wall now, and it could be a piece of art, so I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I like it a lot, and I agree that the taking off the Town of Christiansburg in Montgomery County is a good thing, because you want, you know, the mural to stand on its own. One question. When you put the paint on, and you were talking about vandalism, is it the kind of paint, like if someone came along and did something to it, could you get whatever they put on there off easily? I don't know that much about paint.
I believe the answer to that is yes. I mean, it should be, once it's painted on, it should be washable. But if it was badly vandalized, as is true with, with the brick that's there now, it might require some sort of, cases that...
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Kareem, so in your presentation, it said that it would last well beyond 10 years, but at some point in time, we've all seen sides of brick buildings with flaking and stuff like that, and that would be part of your maintenance budget and things like that. You know, I, I think we should have lots of these murals all over the place, so I highly am excited about it. Thank you for bringing it.
I would hope that when, my thought is that in 10 years, and you know I'll always be here in 10 years, because I'm 57 years old, so, you know. We would hopefully want to go back, we would start by going back to the town of Christiansburg and asking if they could help with maintenance, but who knows what will happen. This is not, because of the natural hill, this is not a wall that would likely be pushed out by an architect in any expansion. That hill, not only is a hill with dirt, it actually has rocks. Which is nice when you're sitting on it.
I agree. I think it looks better without the text. Just one question, that, the, it's like three or four houses that are in view of that, have they been contacted?
No. We know, we certainly, there's one house that's in view of it, and the others are all rental apartments.
Okay.
The big, the mansion-ish house that just sold, and the apartments that are part of his lot, will last for maybe...
Yeah, okay.
Casey is.
I'm sorry. This is Casey Jenkins. You guys are a lot more intelligently than the town councils. But I just wanted to add really quick, the town council is really excited to have this as a partnership, if you guys are willing. Our goal really is to activate a lot of areas around downtown, Cambria, and midtown, and this being a great partnership with the library, as it is a highly programmed space. We would really enjoy that partnership for many years to come, as they do a lot of children's programming down there. So I just wanted to add that caveat in there. The town did approve with the text, but they are very amenable to take that off, particularly that was the will of both the foundation and the Board of Supervisors. So again, we really appreciate that opportunity and look forward to this hopeful partnership.
Thank you.
What do you need from us in order to move this forward?
Well, since the building is owned by the county, we generally felt that what we need is a motion and a vote of support, a vote of approval.
I would agree with that, since it is...
What would be the parliamentary procedure on that, Marty? Where would we, what would we do?
Someone would just make a motion second.
Endorse the...
As the owner of the building authorizing the mural to be put on as shown with the text on there.
Before we do that, should we have some kind of ordinance or something? Because if this goes through, we're going to have other artists wanting to come and paint on a county building, and we have no ordinance or nothing pertaining to this.
Not necessarily ordinance, I mean, you might want to think about policy in the future. I mean, the one good thing is it's another government using it, so you're not, it's not like you're opening it up to the general public to put murals on there, so, which makes it a little, it makes it more of a, not, not like a public, you worry about creating a public forum where, you know, you, someone may want to put something up you don't want. But since you have another government doing it, it's, it's not as, not as troublesome. But yeah, you might want to think about a policy in the future.
I think if we're going to do this, I think we need a policy before we start it. Because once you start it, you can't back up.
Well, you could always end, I mean, but yeah, once it's painted, it's painted.
And I think too, anybody that would want to put something on one of our buildings would have to come ask first, so we at least would have the buffer there.
Yeah, but what are you going to call them? This might be art to some people, but not to other people. That's what I'm saying.
Art is subjective, yeah.
I mean, art is just what the see or sees.
But aren't we approving this art? I'm kind of looking to Marty. I get what Todd's saying, that let's say somebody at freedom of speech wants to put something on one of our walls, but this is different. This is us deciding that mural's okay, and that we like it. Because it's our building, and the seven of us are making, or at least four of the seven would make that decision.
And another government's doing it, so it's not, it'd be more troublesome if you're opening it up to the public, then, then you're in essence maybe making decisions based on content. But you, you know, that's when you run into First Amendment problem.
So it sounds like we're safe to potentially endorse this and vote for it now, but if we wanted to open it to the public, then...
I wouldn't recommend that, no.
Yeah. Well, what would the policy be?
The policy would just be what, you know, that you're, it's limited forum, you're only other governments or agencies. You don't want to open it up to the public, because then you can't control it.
But that's what I'm saying, if we don't have a policy, people can come off the street and say, I'd like to do this, and here's my picture.
I don't think we have to worry about that at this moment in time before we approve this. I think we could create, Marty could create a policy for us to review for some near-term meeting, and it's not like people are knocking down our door to, you know, put murals all over our buildings, so I think we're okay.
Yeah, but once doors open...
But when would you start painting?
You know, for us, as far as the library goes, yes, the town of Christiansburg is paying for it along with the thing, but to us, it is also sort of like decorating our own building. And it's not that different than we put the mural inside a Blacksburg with the Great Blue Whale, and if somebody came up and said, I want to paint something on the wall, we'd just say, no, that's our wall and our mural. But I do see the point that, you know, what, what can we point to to say that? But if somebody came up and said, I want to paint something on the outside of our building, who wasn't the town? I mean, I'd say no, and, you know, if they pushed it, then I would take them to my board, and my board would not approve it, and there we'd go. But I do see your point is, you know, is there something existing that we can point to that says that's the rule? I don't know that there is. But logically?
I have just one other thing to add. It would be very interesting, given that this is picturing five historic buildings, if there was something on the inside of the library, even just something small on the wall that explains what the five historic buildings are in the mural, so it's relatable. Because at the, at the library Board of Trustees meeting, we were kind of, I wonder which one this is. So it would be interesting as a display project of some sort, if this does go on the wall, to have something explaining it.
Yeah, I think we would definitely have some sort of a key to it on the inside, and maybe even a little flyer that people could take. I've seen other libraries do it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Marty's got something.
What else is suggested, maybe the next meeting, we'll put a resolution on there, you want to do it then, and that maybe we come up with a small policy in the interim? So we could, you guys could consider that and consider, that way the publics notify that you're doing this, and the resolution's on the agenda. Would that be a rush? I mean, that's only two weeks away.
Is that okay with, is there any deadlines that y'all are facing? I'm looking at faces.
Our deadline is just the cold wind and the snow. That's what our deadline is.
How long, how long is it going to take to actually paint that mural?
With, if the, if the artist could work uninterrupted without other responsibilities, could work a 40-hour week on it, it would probably take, what did she say, two weeks? Three weeks?
No, if she were working uninterrupted, it would be four or five days, considering that she is a full-time professor.
That's the problem.
That plus the variable of weather is the other consideration in that, the goal would be no later than Thanksgiving to accomplish this due to the weather.
It's about 40 hours of work for her, but it's a, it is weather-dependent, and she's got to, kind of got to work it into other responsibilities. But if we, you know, two weeks from now is two weeks from now, it's not too much.
I should also add very quickly, sorry, I apologize, the town is also crafting a contract with her, so that we, this does not come to a point where she just stops and you have half a mural done on your building. And so we would look at the end of November being that time that is in writing that we have a contract to rebuild with her as well.
One more question.
Sure.
Did you, did you go to the town, or did the town come to you?
Town came to us.
All right, they got buildings, why didn't they put it on one of their buildings?
Well, I think, well, for one thing, we've been doing cooperative things together, various programs with the town recreation department, and we kind of do that with all the towns. And the event management, we go to their farmer's market once a month, and so we were talking, and they said, hey, here's this idea. And the other thing is, I think they thought it would look good in that spot, I think. I don't think I know of any other answer than that. Perhaps Casey does.
At the end of the day, that's such a high-programmed area, and I think the library desires to do more programming there as time goes on. So again, kind of looking at this from two government entities as this beautiful partnership, that we can hopefully just flourish that as time goes on, so. And I will also add, the initiative that we started is for the hopes that other private businesses actually do want to put murals up on their building. Certainly, you have to come to the local government and ask permission if it's on their building, but hopefully this does encourage and inspire more art to go around on private buildings as well, so we can sort of be a part of that catalyst moving forward as we hope to sponsor and facilitate more artwork downtown.
Any more questions?
So we'll have this back in two weeks. Does that work?
Yes, we have two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much, I really appreciate your consideration.
I have a question. Marty, will we have to have a public hearing, or is this, okay?
No, we're not selling it.
Board Members, our next item on the agenda is a public hearing. This is a public hearing related to the boundary line adjustment that has been proposed with the town of Christiansburg for Falling Branch Corporate Park Phase II. Intent to approve a boundary adjustment agreement with the town of Christiansburg to incorporate within the town limits approximately 68.866 acres of property known as Falling Branch Corporate Park Phase II, parcel to tax map number 94-a-8 in the Shawsville Magisterial District. This is, if you recall, the county has purchased some additional property adjacent to the existing Falling Branch Corporate Park, and the town, as part of the agreement, when the county purchased the property, the town has agreed to extend utilities into that in exchange for it coming into the town to allow for economic development, future economic development.
This is it.
Yes, sir.
We have no one signed up to speak for this. If you'd like to step forward, state your name and address, and you have five minutes. Seeing no one, we'll close this.
I think Marty has something.
I was just going to remind the board that this is the fifth and final of the boundary changes that we've been processing with Christiansburg, and as Craig pointed out, with the, with the board's help, the EDA purchase, you know, that a number of acres out there, part of it's in the county, part of it's in the town, so it's the part still in the unincorporated area of the county that's being considered.
Thank you, Marty. We need to get an agreement. Thank you, though. We will have, we, the chair asked, we will have an agreement that we bring back to the board for your approval at...
Yeah, future date, yeah.
Future meeting, yes, sir. The town's still got to take action with their public hearing, too. Thank you. Next item is public address. We have one citizen signed up to speak this evening, and... We have one citizen signed up to speak this evening, and that's Jay Nance. Mr. Nance?
I'm speaking on top later in the evening, not for purpose for this time, but something later.
Okay, now, now, we don't usually have public comment on items on the agenda, so if you'd like to speak, you may want to speak now.
Can I speak about that now?
Yes.
Yes, sir, if you would, please. And if you'll state your name and address, you have five minutes, sir.
Yes, sir, my name's Jay Nance, I'm with Automated Mailing Systems, Honorable King and Board of Supervisors, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm, like I said, president of Automated Mailing Systems. We had an instance where, well, we've been in business since 1981, we're a pre-sort vendor, where we drive around and pick up pre-sorted mail to be sorted and barcoded for discounts for our customers. We have about 120 customers that we do this for each and every day, and we had a situation where we picked up something from a company here in Montgomery County for National Bank of Blacksburg, and there were two envelopes that were involved with this incident. They were due to be postmarked by June 5th, they got postmarked on June 10th. One of the other municipalities that was involved called the National Bank of Blacksburg and said, "Just want to let you know we got your payment. It was postmarked on June 10th, we're waiving the penalties, we don't see it necessary to charge the penalty on this." However, when we got a call from National Bank of Blacksburg on the Montgomery County envelope, they said that they were being forced to pay the penalty. It's a 10% penalty, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of $30,000. We're a very small company, we went ahead and made this payment in good faith on their behalf. It's been a little devastating to us, obviously, and I'm just looking to see if there's anything that y'all would reconsider in trying to help us with the extension of the deadline from June 5th to June 10th. We've never had this happen before. We've mailed out 1099s, we've mailed out tax forms, we've mailed out everything for 30-some years, we've never had this happen. We were quite shocked that our insurance did not cover something like this. We've surprisingly found out that, since it was not lost and was not damaged, that they cannot cover under errors and omissions. We've also drafted up a letter to each of our customers to have them sign stating if they have anything that's subject to penalty by postmark being late, and we've strongly encouraged them to take that to the post office themselves. It would be very hard for us to be responsible for that due to the fact that we do about 70,000 pieces of mail a day. So we're just trying to see if there's anything, any way this can be ruled on any differently. I don't know if y'all have any questions for me, certainly.
Under public address, they don't respond. Thank you. Thank you. So we had signed up, is there anyone else that would like to address the board under the public address this evening?
Seeing none, we move on.
Yes, sir.
Addendum?
No addendum this evening, sir.
No addendum. Consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Madam Secretary, call roll, please.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Fritzkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Chair Keane?
Aye.
Seven ice.
All right. Board members, first item of new business this evening is what Mr. Nance referred to earlier in public address, and that is the request for extension of tax payment. You have information in your packet regarding this incident. You also have information from the treasurer explaining the position of the county and the treasurer's office on this matter. This was added to your agenda for discussion, should you have any, but if there's no action from the board, the treasurer's action stands. Is that correct?
Well, this isn't technically an appeal, the treasurer's action. What, the way it works is, under 58 Book 13916, the treasurer has sole jurisdiction in determining whether there's fault or no fault, and so if there's, if something happens and the taxpayer has no fault, the treasurer has the authority to waive any penalty and interest so long as it's paid within a certain period of time. And so, the, the company involved went to the treasurer first, and she made a determination, which she has the authority to do, saying there was no fault, I mean, that the penalties would stand because it was her position that the company was at fault. And so now, what you've seen before you is a different request. They're asking you, the board, under the same statute but a different provision, for you to extend the due date for, for these properties, about 200 properties that are involved, because remember, this is money that's in real estate escrow for mortgages or deeds of trust, and they're being paid by the bank to develop the, the escrows. And so they're asking you to extend the due date from June 5th to June 10th, and what the legal standard says is if you find, statute says, "Whenever good cause exists," and so that's, if you believe there's good cause, then you can extend it, and if you don't, then you would deny the request. And so they've petitioned you as the board to ask for this relief, so what the treasurer did before is not relevant, other than that was one of the steps they went through, but you're not reviewing that, that decision.
Marty, as far as this resolution, so we need to either, I could make a motion at this point in time to deny this resolution?
Yeah, deny, or, yeah, approve would mean grant the extension.
And then we would, under parliamentary procedures, be, Robert's rules, or be able to discuss it at that point in time, once this motion on the floor?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to deny the request.
Is there a second?
I would second that.
Mr. Chair, may I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a conflict because I own National Bank of Blacksburg stock, so I have to refrain from discussion or voting on this issue.
Marty, I also own MBB stock, but I, and I just, it's part of my disclosure. Right. I don't, would that disqualify me as well? I didn't, because I was, I mean, I think I own about $10,000 worth.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I wasn't aware of yours, I was aware of Mary's, and I told Mary that she should have stayed, and I recommend that you do the same, because MBB is involved.
Okay. I guess then I withdraw that motion at this time, and won't be a part of any further discussions.
Right, so we would need a new motion to start, yeah.
I would go ahead and make that motion. Second.
Who wants to discuss?
I would like to ask the treasurer a question, if we could do that. Thank you for coming tonight. I don't know how often something like this comes up, but if a citizen was to fall under the same situation, is there a different procedure for them?
No. This is the first time that I am aware of it involving this many tax bills, but I feel like the same situation would apply, I mean, if someone came into the office, which they have after the due date, and said, you know, "I misplaced the bill, I was out of town, I forgot the bill," for whatever reason, we do not waive it.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, there are certain circumstances, if someone's in the hospital on the due date of tax, we would consider waiving it, but for the fact that someone just laid it aside, forgot it, just didn't get it postmarked by the due date, I mean, we have quite a few people with the mail going to North Carolina, sometimes they declare that they had it in there on the 5th, but we have to go by the postmark, the U.S. Postal Service's postmark, so we are, you know, very stringent in making sure that we go by that postmark date.
And I would say that's probably based on being consistent and treating everybody the same.
Right, and being fair.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
You vote now? If you're ready. I think there's a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
The motion is to deny.
I just want to make sure I'm...
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion is to deny.
Madam Secretary, call roll.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Marty, are there any other options for small business owners, you know, if, you know, I'm familiar in financial planning world, errors and omissions, sometimes crazy things happen, and you actually have to cash in on that, you know, I don't know, are there any other exceptions?
No, not that I'm aware of. In fact, there's actually a state statute that says that the party that's involved in the escrow is responsible to pay the penalty and not the property whose money was put in escrow.
So if, if what you're saying, really National Bank would be liable for this, as opposed to this...
No, I don't know what kind of contractual relationship they have with the mailing company, so it would be one of those two, yeah.
What, what, could you repeat what you said?
Yeah, the party that was here talking to you wasn't the bank, it was the mailing company. I don't know what kind of contractual relationship they have with the bank to do that work, that, you know, so one of those two parties would be responsible.
Correct.
Not, not the individual property.
By any chance, would National Bank be able to use their errors and omissions to potentially...
I have no idea. Yeah, I have no idea.
Mm-hmm.
Any more discussion? This vote is to deny. Madam Secretary, you come roll, please.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
At this point, I need to abstain due to the fact that I own National Bank of Blacksburg stock, and as the county attorney has advised, because of that ownership, there could be a potential conflict of interest.
Ms. Fritzkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
I have to abstain due to the reasons I stated earlier, as to the fact that I own stock in the National Bank of Blacksburg.
Chair Keane?
Aye.
I have five eyes to know to deny.
Mr. Chair and Board members, next item on the agenda this evening is to establish the personal property tax relief percentage for 2019. As you're probably very familiar with this, this is related to the car tax provision that was adopted some years ago. The percentage for fiscal year, or for calendar year 19, is 37.67 percent. The number continues to go down.
I think over 50 percent, over 50 percent, Carol said it's gone down.
Yeah.
Well, I think it started out at 80 percent.
Yeah, it's never, yeah, if you recall, it's never been 100 percent, because...
No, I think it's...
But the, the state has capped in their budget, it's 950 million a year that's allocated for this, and so it's spread out over a larger and larger base, and this year it's 37.67 percent. Yes, sir, need you to adopt that as, so it can be applied as part of the personal property taxes.
Is there a motion?
Make that motion. Second.
Any discussion? Madam Secretary, call roll, please.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Fritzkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Chair Keane?
Aye.
Seven ice.
Board members, last item under new business this evening is an appropriation for food services contract for the jail. There's no, no increase in the cumulative fiscal year 20 budget due to this. We are asking the board to transfer $48,600 from special contingencies to the sheriff's department for the cost of outsourcing jail food services. The sheriff's office no longer has employees that are doing this, we've contracted food services for the jail to a third-party vendor, it's actually the same vendor that provides food for the Western Virginia Regional Jail, and the sheriff's existing budget can cover the $214,625,000 of the total contract, leaving a balance of $48,600 to be approved from special contingencies.
Is there a motion?
I'd make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is it likely to, I guess extrapolate from this request, that next year we will, in fiscal year 21, we will have an increased line item for this expense as well?
Because of that $48,600, yes. Yeah, the, the annual contract for food service is $263,225. The sheriff's budget this year had $214,625 for personnel and for food costs, but for a number of reasons, the sheriff felt it was more beneficial and more efficient to contract out that service as opposed to continuing to operate a small kitchen in the jail.
So just for future years, we would also see a request increase in the sheriff's office budget for that?
Yes, ma'am. I don't know.
Any more questions? Comments? Madam Secretary, call roll, please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Fritzkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Fritzkowski?
Trip you up.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Keane?
Aye.
Seven ice.
Any attorney's report?
I have no report.
Great, thank you.
That's already talked enough.
That's right.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to use some of this time, I don't have a lot, but I do have a few things. Wanted to remind folks that the Renew the New event, which is associated with cleanup on the New River, is this Saturday, our Parks and Recreation Department is coordinating that, so if you're interested in participating, reach out to Parks and Rec, they'd love to have you. Next week, several staff members, and I believe a couple of board members, are attending the broadband summit next Thursday in Richmond. Sent out an email to the board on that today, and we're continuing to move forward with some planning and some good work on that. Also want to remind the board about the joint meeting with all the New River and Roanoke Valley local governments on Thursday, September 12th. That is at 6:00 at Virginia Tech, Carrion Research Institute. That is an evening that Dr. Sands from Virginia Tech, Nancy Agee from Carrion, several other, Michael Friedlander from the school are going to be there to talk to all the elected officials in the region about the great work that's going on over there, so hopefully we'll have a good turnout from the board for that. Of course, don't forget, next Monday is Labor Day, we won't be here. And lastly, I wanted to recognize Carol just briefly, we are moving forward with the bonds for the school projects, we submitted the VPSA application on Friday.
Well, I think you just about said it all, so I'll be very... I, I did want to make sure that everybody was aware that the application process itself is just the beginning of this process, it's not the end, and there are a number of different steps we need to go through before you get to the point of actually authorizing the bond sale and we actually go to market. So as we go through that process, you're going to likely see numbers change, they tend to be fluid during this period of time because we don't know what the issuance costs are, we're not sure what the rates are going to be, so there's a number of things that may change as we go through. One of the things that changed from Courtney's presentation on the 12th to the application
was the not to exceed number was estimated in what he presented at 30.8 million. And that's gone up to 33.3 million. The reason being is that it's given, it's factored in an option to give some flexibility in the event that the bond sell very well. We hear the markets are doing extremely well. And if the bonds are in very much demand, and I apologize to all the financial people who were cringe when I say this, but we might actually make a little bit of money on it, which then would allow us to do some payments for the interest only.
It's called selling the bonds at a premium.
Yes, it's, I don't want even anyone to think I can explain premium bonds and discounts. But the gist of it is, if the markets are doing extremely well, then we may do well also. And we would want to use that against any of the interest-only payments. But again, we've got a lot more steps to go. The 23rd is the public hearing date, and that will be the date where you get down to another step of actually authorizing the issuance and we see where the market is at that point in time. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Moving along, rates look good.
Rates look good. Is that all you have?
That's all I have, sir, thank you.
Supervisor Shepherd?
No report.
Supervisor Tuck?
No report.
Supervisor Steen?
No report.
We aren't doing another video, are we?
Yes.
Well, unfortunately, I do have a little report, and then I have a question. Okay, first of all, for those people that are attending the VACO annual meeting this fall, there will be a session devoted to training for conflict of interest. If you don't want to do it, I guess, like ahead of time on the computer, wanted to let you know about that. I also wanted to let you know that for the animal care and adoption center on the Clear the Shelter Day, that we really beat out our surrounding competition. And that particular day, we had 50 animals adopted, 35 cats, 14 dogs, and one rabbit. And on that day, we had 40% of the available cats adopted and 48% of the available dogs adopted. And so our shelter is doing really well. And I think I saw on the Facebook page that day, to date, there were 777 animals that had, you know, had new homes. So we should be very proud of the work that's going on there. The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention, I know that probably, maybe Carol's the only one here, maybe, that remembers Roy Thorpe. He was the county attorney before Marty, and he passed away on August 11th. He was only 73. He had moved to Falls Church after he left here. And I only served with him from January of 96 to May of 96. But he was a very professional attorney. He knew a lot about county government, and he participated in outside associations. And so it was sad to hear that that had happened. The other thing I want to know is can we get, I would like to know personally how many crashes occurred on 81 during the moving in period for Virginia Tech? And I'd like to know how many backups occurred, because I was involved in things that happened on Friday, like the truck in back of me luckily didn't hit me going to Roanoke, but a car hit him. I had to call 911. And backups coming back were eight miles. And I would like to know, do they keep statistics on that? I'd like to find out from David Clark exactly how many crashes and how many backups occurred.
They would get that information as the reports get turned into DMV, and then they can access that.
And the other thing that I want to know, and I don't know how we find out because there's that group that meets, a lot of this could have been avoided if people had had warning that we're going 60, 65, and 70 miles an hour, that the traffic was coming to a dead stop. And they weren't warned because there was nothing to warn them. And that's what caused the crashes. So the one I'm particularly referring to at milepost 123 heading north. I would like to know if that group is investigating what some of the other states have, like some kind of flashing, you know, signals or something? If they could just let people know ahead of time that, hey, you need to slow down. Now, whether people do that or not, but it's very dangerous. And you all have been in that same situation. All of a sudden, it's a dead stop, and people are slamming their brakes on and running off the road. So I feel very lucky last Friday, and I just wanted to, I want to update because I think another impact that all this is happening, I mean, with Virginia Tech, is the traffic on 81. I mean, it was not a good situation. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Supervisor DeMott?
I'd like to piggyback on what Supervisor Biggs just talked about. When I was an adjunct professor at Virginia Tech several years ago, I conscientiously, right at the beginning of the semester, told my students, hey, if you can leave a date early for Thanksgiving or wait until Saturday to leave, it would probably be to your advantage because I can pretty much predict that there will be at least one accident between here and Roanoke or Barretat. So in addition to move in and Thanksgiving and fall break and things like that, there are key, let alone football games, right? So the only thing that I wanted to bring up, and I may not say this exactly correctly, but something, a board member, a supervisor, in the last month requested a special meeting of the EDA. And I wanted to make sure that if there were some policies or if we should create some policies for board members to request something like that, it would be a hardship to some of the agencies and boards that report to us or that we're a part of if any one supervisor were to do that on a regular basis. Is there anything that we can do, Marty, to help set up some guidelines, some paths to proper protocol or anything like that to help make sure that these agencies or boards weren't, you know, at the whim of a supervisor?
I mean, the board can set, you know, rules that govern, you know, the way the board operates. You could do that, I mean.
I'd like us to explore that, if we can talk about that in a future meeting. Thank you.
Vice Chair Demott?
Just one thing really briefly. Welcome back to Virginia Tech and Radford University, both, of course, starting school today. So it's been a very exciting time, not just traffic-wise, but also just the energy level, especially in my district and some of the other districts, has changed considerably. Also, the vehicles on the road have changed considerably. So I would like to encourage everybody to exercise patience and kindness when our new neighbors in our community are exploring what our community and our local businesses have to offer. That's it.
Thank you.
Chair, Chair King, can I add something? Chair King, can, may I add something to what Supervisor Demott said?
Yes, ma'am.
She and I, and probably Sarah, and maybe even Daryl, have run into this problem where the bicycles and the one-wheel scooters and all this is going on. And a lot of the students are not crossing at the crosswalk. So probably as an advisory, as everyone, be really, really careful because it's so hard to be aware of where all these students are when you're just driving.
And they're on very, like, those one, they ride the wheels.
Right.
A wheel, just a wheel.
It's really scary now. It's really scary.
He rides a wheel.
Yeah, one-wheel thing, yeah, yeah.
A wheel. And it goes fast, it's a fast wheel.
Trying to get out of the way. That all?
Yeah.
Good point.
Thank you. Have no report, but I would like to make a statement if I could. Might get choked up, so give me a minute. I'd like to thank everybody that reached out to me and my family. I lost my mother, we buried her Saturday. And I just want everybody to know how much I really appreciate you reaching out to me and my family. It was very much appreciated. That being said, that's all.